...body cameras in the field. So far, 80 officers have started recording their interactions with the public. But criticism is mounting over who can and can't view the footage. Rasha Goel has more.
The LAPD recently began rolling out its plan to equip 7,000 body cameras on police officers. LAPD's mission area officers were the first of three LAPD divisions to receive training on how to use the cameras.
Rather than the he-said, she-said mentality that we've stuck to for the last 100 years, we can now say, "Roll the video." That's a game changer.
Officers will train on the job while wearing the cameras, which can record up to five and a half hours of video. Officers will then upload the video to a cloud storage space for long-term storage. LAPD chief Charlie Beck says it's a day that will go down in history.
The exhaustive crafting of a policy, the exhaustive development of technology that goes with it, and this is just the beginning.
However, the cameras have also drawn criticism from some activists concerned that the material will not be made available to the public through public records requests. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently addressed that concern.
The first filing that is coming from one of these this week here is a domestic violence incident. And the evidence from it is of an altercation or engagement of the suspect and the victim in that incident. That is not something that should be shared publicly. We should not have a policy that says automatically that goes out to the public. I want accountability on both parts.
I don't want one victim to not call the Los Angeles Police Department because she is afraid that what she reports to us will wind up on YouTube or in the public domain.
Videos will be made accessible only after the chief approves their release to the public. All LAPD officers are expected to be wearing the cameras by the end of next year. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Officials say an analysis will be done after six months to check on the efficiency of the cameras. While it's been a long time coming, but now kids in the San Fernando Valley can finally have a real kick on the field. These young soccer players are trying out their new synthetic soccer field at the Van Nuys Sherman Oaks War Memorial Park. The beautiful new turf is a stunning sight and a welcome relief from the dust-and-rock-covered fields the players used to play on. They say that for years, there was no grass, making it hard to play ball, but not anymore.
It's way better. It's easier to play soccer and kick the ball.
Council District 4, the Department of Rec and Parks, and other city departments recently unveiled three new synthetic fields for the neighborhood.
They need a place to come and play. Parents need a place to have their kids and parents get exercise, so we're really hopeful that this is the first step in the city fixing the rest of this great park, which, you know, just serves the community.
Located in one of the most heavily-used sports complexes, the fields host thousands of soccer games each year. But with a lack of rainfall, officials said maintaining natural turf proved difficult, so they decided to go another direction.
This is the latest and newest and greatest generation of synthetic fields anywhere in the city of Los Angeles.
The synthetic turf, which costs $2.7 million, allows the fields to be used year-round and will result in substantial water conservation. The fields will save 5.5 million gallons of water a year. This brings the number of synthetic fields in Los Angeles to more than 30. City engineers said they use the best material available.
This infield material is 100% natural, environmentally safe, and organic. Yes!
The synthetic fields are expected to last up to 10 years. While active-duty Navy ships dock in San Pedro to flex their military might, Gil Reyes reports from the sold-out LA Navy Days.
Visitors lucky enough to snag tickets before they sold out got a chance to climb aboard and check out the gun show.
Just the fact that it was for families, and I just want to educate my son about the military and how they support our country and protect our country, and basically let him know that these are the superheroes, the real superheroes of our world.
Thousands of visitors showed up at the LA Harbor for LA Navy Days. That's where three active-duty Navy ships dock temporarily for public tours. Modern American sea power up close.
So if you guys look to the rear, or if you look at this system right here, it's the VLS vertical launching system. All right? It just fires a bunch of missiles. You have a missile for just about everything. You have anti-air, anti-sub.
The visiting vessels included two guided missile cruisers from San Diego, the USS Bunker Hill and the USS Cape St. George. Also docked, the guided missile destroyer, the USS Halsey from Pearl Harbor.
My girlfriend's son is actually going to be on...
The USS Halsey. He's gonna be reporting in Pearl Harbor when it goes over there.
So we're looking forward to seeing these amazing ships.
And I'll get to see it before he does.
A family affair for sure onboard these maritime models of military might at the port of LA. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Though the visiting vessels have sailed home, the port's very own USS Iowa and Lane Victory are open on most days for museum tours. Well, as we reported earlier, city leaders announced an international redesign competition for Pershing Square, creating a buzz on social media. Here's this week in tweets. After the announcement of the competition, Pershing Square Renew posted, "A public-private partnership at its best as hashtag DTLA community participates as co-creators and visionaries." Juan Vasquez tweeted, "It's about community taking ownership over the use of space. Will be awesome to see how Pershing Square Renew brings this to downtown LA." Pershing Square Renew also wrote, "The challenge is not just a design competition, but a challenge to create a space that everyone loves. #PershingsquareRenewChallenge." And Pershing Square also posted a pic of Councilmember Jose Huizar at the announcement, writing, "Take part in re-envisioning Pershing Square, LA's oldest park in the heart of the city. We challenge everyone to reimagine the park as a world-class public space." And later, Pershing Square Renew posted a black-and-white flashback photo to four architects in 1987, holding up models for the redesign of Pershing Square. To participate in the competition, visit pershingsquarerenew.com/competition. And that's a look at this week in tweets. While a street in Pacoima that used to attract crime and loitering is now a People's Street Plaza for neighborhood events. Gil Reyes reports from Pacoima.
Folklorico dancers celebrate the official opening of Pacoima's new neighborhood hangout. It's a one-block stretch of Bradley Avenue now called Bradley Avenue Plaza.
Do you remember how it used to look like and how does it compare to now?
Oh, it's night and day.
This is amazing what's going on here.
Pacoima resident Alisa Avalos Venzer feels safe enough to bring her kids here to exercise on new fitness equipment or to relax on shaded outdoor furniture.
But before this, it was basically a dead-end outlet, where we had a lot of issues, not just with cars, but we had issues where you had people loitering and really not doing anything that was productive. Now, you've got a space that the community can not only enjoy, but really draws people from outside of the community, which is great.
Pacoima area councilman Felipe Fuentes teamed with neighborhood groups like Pacoima Beautiful to help raise money for the spruce-up, turning Bradley into what the city calls "a People's Street Plaza." Area residents already taking advantage of Bradley Plaza, hosting free zumba and breakdancing exhibitions and classes, and also free Wi-Fi will be available here soon. But what else do area residents want to see?
More exercise machines, more tables, more kid-friendly things, because if the kids find it exciting and fun, then they're gonna drag out their parents.
Dan Barnett, owner of the local laundromat, says he likes the plaza and agrees. The visitors and the events improve the neighborhood.
But they don't have any parking, and so they come into my area, where my customers would have parked, and park there. And they don't really know not to park here, but they don't read the signs that I have posted.
So jot that down. More parking spaces, yet another suggestion to make this great street even greater.
Please come to Pacoima. It's a different Pacoima, and it's a better Pacoima.
In Pacoima, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Two other People's Street Plazas are located in Lomert Park and in North Hollywood. While enjoy theater in the woods for the whole family, podcasting takes center stage, and get the inside scoop on architect Frank Gehry. All this and this week's things to do. Sunday mornings mean fun for families at Will Gears Theatrical Botanicum in Topanga. Peter Asop's annual Kids Concert Series takes place in the Theatricum's magical outdoor amphitheater in the woods. On September 20th, enjoy Rhythm Child as Norman Jones beats his drums and plays soulful rhythms, making music for parents that kids can understand. He was the winner of the John Lennon Songwriting Contest grand prize, recipient of both a National Parenting Publication Gold Award and a citation from the Los Angeles City Council. He also got an invitation to play at the White House. Will Gears Theatrical Botanicum is located at 1419 North Topanga Canyon Boulevard in Topanga, midway between Malibu and the San Fernando Valley. For more information and to purchase tickets, call 310-455-3723. The Los Angeles Podcast Festival is back for its fourth year of bringing the biggest names in podcasting together for a three-day extravaganza at the luxurious Sofitel Hotel in Los Angeles. During the course of the weekend-long event taking place September 18 through the 20th, you'll see live podcast recordings, panels, special events, and parties, along with a special stand-up comedy show on Saturday, September 19. The Sofitel Hotel is located at 8555 Beverly Boulevard. For tickets, visit Eventbrite.com and search Podcast. Architect Frank Gehry and architecture critic Paul Goldberg discuss Gehry's prolific and groundbreaking career to mark the opening of the special exhibition Frank Gehry. Gehry presents a comprehensive examination of his extraordinary body of work from the early 1960s to the present, featuring more than 200 drawings, many of which have never been seen publicly, and 65 models that illuminate the evolution of Gehry's thinking. Tracing the arc of his career, the exhibition focuses on two main themes: urbanism and the development of the new systems of digital design and fabrication, including his use of a software tool which allows the digital manipulation of 3D representations. This retrospective offers an opportunity to reflect on the development of Gehry's work and to understand the processes of one of the great architectural minds. The exhibit runs now through March 20 at Lacma, located at 5905 Wilshire Boulevard. For more, visit lacma.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Car accident deaths are a possibility, a probability. What if you don't get a chance to say goodbye? What if there are no more birthday celebrations or friendly conversations because you're just not here? Put the phone down. Practice hands-free driving. Give yourself and others a chance to participate in life. Obey the rules of the road.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
...
...
...
Los Angeles City Council, today is Friday, September 18th, which means that I've got 24 hours left until my anniversary of 22 years with my wife tomorrow. So I just wanted to put that out there and wish my wife a happy anniversary for putting up with me for 22 years. With that, we are live streaming on the internet as well as Channel 35. And first order of business, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Huizar, Carras, Recorion, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Weston, 10 members present and accor Mr. President.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval in the minutes.
All right. Mr. Bloomingfield moves. Mr. Bonin seconds. Next item, please.
Communal resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Members, let's go ahead, if we could, direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda now.
Items 1 through 3 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1, B, G, L, R, and S may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid. Also, there is a request to continue item 1Q to October 9.
And that'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much. And we have cards on those items as well?
Cards on items 1 and 3.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold those. No cards on item 2?
Correct.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 2. Okay, go ahead and open the roll and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 7 are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 7 for Councilman Residio.
Okay, members, any other specials on items 4, 5, or 6? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those items are approved. Next items, please.
And Mr. President, for item 4, the ordinance will be held over to October 9 for a second reading, if not reconsidered with 12 members.
Great, excellent. That'll be the order. Fine. Thank you very much.
October 6.
Okay. And next items, please.
Items 8 through 11 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and consider those. Those are 10 votes required for consideration. Open the roll and close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, and those are before us, and we have, I'm sure, cards on every item?
Cards on items 9, 10, and 11.
9, 10, and 11. We'll go ahead and take item 8, 8 through D. Members, do we have any specials on 8, 8 through D? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Great, those are approved. Thank you very much. And I'd like to yield the floor to Councilmember O'Farrell for a special introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have a very special group of six engineering students who have traveled halfway across the world from Beirut, Lebanon, participating in the Los Angeles Beirut Sister Cities program, exchange program. We would like to welcome them to council chambers. These six students were selected for their academic and civic accomplishments in this exchange program, strengthening ties between Beirut and Los Angeles. And nine and a half years ago, I had the great pleasure of traveling to Beirut with my predecessor, now Mayor Eric Garcetti, to sign that sister-city agreement. So we welcome you to Los Angeles. Have a wonderful visit. They are heading to El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora, la Reina de Los Angeles today. So enjoy your visit, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Excellent, welcome. Thank you very much. With that, colleagues, I'm gonna go ahead and take up item 7. If we can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And we're gonna go ahead and send that forth with as well, without objection. That'll be the order. All right. And that'll go ahead and take us into presentations. Yes, sir?
Can you item 1S for two weeks?
1S for two weeks. That will bring us to October... 6th.
Thank you.
Okay. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take up item 3. John Walsh, filed by Eric Previn. And I'm gonna ask that you please stay on the agenda for item 3. Seeing no other cards for item 3, those are the two speakers on item 3.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is an application for alcohol. On-site and off-site consumption. On the street, drink anywhere you want. It's called the Brew Cellar. It's for public convenience, because nowadays, it takes sometimes 10, 15 steps away from one alcohol dispensary to another. You're gonna vote on this, and I want you to realize, when you vote for every single damn alcohol license, we have more alcohol dispensaries per square mile than any other city in America, and we have the most hit-and-run. So you vote for the Brew Cellar, and I want to say to all of you, the blood of the next hit-and-run victim is on your hands. Recorion, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Bonin, Bloomingfield, the blood! When are you gonna put a cap on liquor licenses? When are you going to put a cap on liquor licenses? You give them to everybody. This city, don't come here, Switzerland, don't come here, because you'll be run over during the Olympics. HollywoodHighlands.org. They're all gonna vote, it's gonna be 15 to nothing, and we're gonna have another place where you can buy poison. HollywoodHighlands.org. We have to put a cap on liquor licenses. This city is liquored up with poison. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Yes, Mr. Englander, it's Eric Previn.
Excuse me, one second. I'm gonna hold his time. I'm gonna ask you, Juan, to sit down, do not dance around the aisle. I'm going to ask you, Juan, to sit down, do not dance around the aisles. If you want to dance around the aisles, you can do that in the back of the room or to the side. Thank you, Mr. Previn, started your time all over again.
Yeah, it's Eric Previn from CD2, and, sir, nobody is dancing in the aisles, just to be fair. And I wanted to reference this item, which is Item 3, in CD14. It's an opportunity to invoke the public convenience and necessity here to put an alcohol license into effect to permit alcohol sales. You, thank you, by the way, sir, on Item 7 for the hit-and-run item. I think there's a high percentage of...
Stay on the item, please, number 3.
Yeah, but in alcohol, there's a high percentage of hit-and-runs that are related to alcohol, we've learned. I think a lot of people, we can't catch all these guys, that's why you have the robust rewards, but we try, and many of them, it turns out, are drunk or under the influence of some kind of stuff. So that is a serious concern. I also noted in Item 7 that you've added prostitution to the crimes for which you'll impound vehicles. I don't know about that, sir, you might want to consult with the city attorney. No, no, this is all part of the same meeting, sir, that you just approved with great fanfare, forthwith the item to make prostitution an impoundable offense. But be that as it may, this one is about should we sell booze or not? And they come up frequently, frequently 7-Eleven is involved because they provide a kind of service. This is not a 7-Eleven item. Last week, Walmart just got a big license at County to provide liquor. We are lousy with liquor licenses, sir, we do too much of it. We should be doing less of it, I think, because I think if people really are responsible drinkers, they can find places to do it by over-availability-ing it, if that's a word, and it's not. I think we do not do a service to the residents of the city who are really trying to keep sober on the road. And, you know, sir, nobody loves public safety more than you and Mr. Wesson, yet neither of you, I'm going to give my last 19 seconds, could be a quiet protest for this morning's Rules Committee in which I was stymied once again, so. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think there are any more cards on this item. Let's prepare to vote, let us open the roll, close it, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to, Mr. Bloomingfield, would you and your crew, we have a very important presentation, so if we could get Mr. Bloomingfield, I know Mr. Englander and any other participants, our city attorney, Mike Fuhr.
Guys, want to come up, too?
Yeah, it's not quite... It's not a real good flat surface for that.
Oh, there you go.
Mr. Bloomingfield, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, good morning. It's my pleasure to be joined today by my colleagues, Councilmember Englander. Mr. Kresch may be joining us a little bit later, and we have our city attorney, Mike Fuhr, as we mark Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year. 5776, wow, we made it. I'm still writing 5775 on all my checks, though, it's crazy. No, for my family and for millions of Jewish families around the world, Rosh Hashanah is a time to take stock and reflect on the year that has passed and the year that is to come. It's a moment for the community to celebrate the coming of the Jewish New Year with family and with friends and with colleagues. In this, what is the holiest time of the year in the Jewish tradition, we are reminded of the values of faith upon which this great nation was built, the fundamental decency of men and women, charity, justice, equality, and what's known as Tikun Olam, or healing of the world. For those of us gathered here in this chamber, all of us, it's a reminder of the important work to which we are committed to as public servants. One of the most powerful concepts of the High Holidays is that during this time, our fates are sealed in what's known as the Book of Life. What we say is, "On Rosh Hashanah, it is written; and on Yom Kippur, it is sealed." I find this concept tremendously moving as it serves to clarify my belief that each of us is entrusted with the responsibility of creating the world in which we want to live. As we welcome the year 5776, I want to wish Shana Tova, a good and sweet New Year to all those celebrating across the world. May the year ahead be one of peace, health, and prosperity. And I'd like to ask my colleagues to say a few words as well before we have our speakers, starting with my colleague Mitch Englander, and then we'll have the city attorney.
Great, excellent.
Thank you, thank you very much. This is a wonderful time of year, and thank you, Bob, for doing this, and Mike, and the Jewish Federation. We've got David Siegel here as well, from our leader here. And in thinking about Rosh Hashanah, the anniversary of the creation of Adam and Eve, and the Jewish tradition teaches us that for 10 days, as Bob said, the Book of Life is open. And millions of Jews ask God to inscribe their names in that book and begin again with a renewed life. During this time of replenishment and recovery, we are reminded of the transformative power of hope and humanity in all of our daily lives. We are reminded of our responsibility to one another, to forgive and to pledge a rededication to our community and to each other. We're also reminded of our obligation to combat ignorance and antisemitism in our community and encourage religious tolerance for every religion. Nobel laureate Eli Weizel once famously said, "God gave Adam a secret." And that secret was not how to begin, but how to begin again. The year 5776 of the Jewish calendar is ushered in with the soul-stirring blast of the Shofar. And while the ram's horn is traditionally meant to summon Jews to prayer and reflection, it is a message that echoes beyond the walls of Jewish places of worship. I would ask everyone to use this holiday, regardless of their religious creed, as an opportunity to recommit yourself to the values and principles and to begin again with a commitment to helping each other and to our community. There's too many struggles that are happening, not just internationally, but on the streets here in our city and our county, where there's too many major issues we deal with every day. We have families literally living under bridges, living in the shadows and living in bushes, veterans who have served this country. Now is the time to rethink about that once again and step up and recommit to rebegin again, which is what Rosh Hashanah is all about, is helping each other. Shana Tova, may you have a good year and may you be inscribed in the blessing in the Book of Life. Thank you.
And next, we're going to hear from my friend and our great city attorney, Mike Fuhr.
Thank you, Rabbi Bloomingfield, for that introduction, I appreciate that. I actually very much like the 5775, Joe, I'm going to keep that in mind. It's a very important moment in the life of the Jewish community, not just here in Los Angeles, but around the world. But as my colleagues have mentioned, it's an important moment for all of us because it is an opportunity for us, irrespective of how we worship, to focus on how much we've mattered in the days that have passed for the Jewish community in the year that just passed, and how much more we still can do in the year to come. Rosh Hashanah is a moment of sober reflection, but it's also a day that commemorates hope and the opportunity that can lie ahead the next day. As we think about those opportunities here in Los Angeles, we do have, if we can summon the strength and the focus and the tenacity to do it, the opportunity to rise to the occasion, to challenge the status quo. As Mitch said, this could be the year when, if we lift each other up, we grapple successfully with the fact that homelessness plagues our community in ways most of us could never have imagined. We have an opportunity to change that in each of our neighborhoods. Gun violence plagues too many communities here in Los Angeles right now. There are steps we can take collectively to change that so kids and their families can walk to school safely. Economic inequality pervades our city in ways that are corrosive to our entire society. We in office who serve our community have a chance not only to lead by example, but to bring substantive change to the streets of our city. Rosh Hashanah reminds us that this is the moment. If not this moment, when will that moment come? Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Next, we're going to hear from someone who's been before this chamber several times, the Council General of Israel. He's also been partnering with us on the Israel-Los Angeles Task Force to try to find areas of mutual benefit between the State of Israel and the City of Los Angeles. Council General, see you.
And welcome, Council General, it's always a pleasure, always a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, and thank you very much for celebrating the Jewish New Year together. It is the most universal holiday in the Jewish calendar. It's the birth of the world and the birth of the human being, and it reminds us that we live in a world that is not perfect, as has been mentioned, a world that needs to be repaired both locally and globally. And we're about to hear the blowing of the ram horn, and it is such a powerful symbol in our tradition. The ram's horn is the most physical element of nature. It's what the ram uses to defend itself and to attack. But we, as human beings, take that element of nature and we breathe through that horn, and we put out two calls, one that is broken, which is called Tru'a. It's the broken call to denote the brokenness of our world, but then the majestic, long call of T'Kia, which indicates the perfection that we need to reach. And for all of us, it's a message as leaders that we can do more locally, we can do more globally to bring peace, to bring reconciliation, to bring an end of suffering, whether it's people living under a bridge or millions of refugees that are leaving the Middle East because of the difficulties there. So let this be a year in which we dedicate ourselves to our partnership in overcoming the drought, in working on climate change, on technology, on helping secure our communities, and helping this world be more prosperous, more safe, and more peaceful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Great, thank you, Council General. Next, we have another person who's no stranger to all of you here. He is the head of the Jewish Federation. He's a good friend and an important part of the Jewish community here in Los Angeles. Talking about none other than Jay Sanderson.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Council. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to just quickly echo what my colleagues and friends have said here. Rosh Hashanah is an opportunity for us to look back and look at the year we had. Could we be better individually? Could we do more collectively? But most importantly, it's an opportunity for us to look forward. For 104 years, the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles has worked with this city council and with the City of Los Angeles to make this city good, great, for everybody, not just Jews, but for everybody in every corner of our community. Let us, this year, commit to do better, to address the trying issues that we all know we have in this community, so that every citizen of this community can live a full life. That's what we commit to at the Jewish Federation, and I know we'll be doing our work together with the city council and the City of Los Angeles. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for your continued partnership, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Skim a round of applause.
Next, we're going to hear from another leader in the Jewish community here in Los Angeles, talking about Sean Evanheim, who is the Israeli-American Council leader. And Sean, would you please come up to the microphone?
Good morning, and thank you for having us again. Looking back, Los Angeles is where the Israeli-American Council started seven years ago, and today it's a nationwide organization. So we really want to use this opportunity and thank the City of Los Angeles for allowing us the opportunity to start the IAC here. And this is the largest Israeli-American community outside of Israel. So I want to use this opportunity and wish you all Shana Tova and look forward to do many great things together for the benefit of the City of Los Angeles and the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sean. And now, we're going to have our final speaker. We're going to bring up Rabbi Joshua Hoffman. He's with Valley Beth Shalom, and he's going to come forward, he's going to talk about, give a blessing for the apples and honey, talk a little bit about that tradition, as well as blowing the Shofar. And when you hear the Shofar, think, you know, it really will connect us all to history. This Shofar, the ram's horn, has been sounded at this time of year, every year, for thousands of years. You know, we don't know a lot about what people, how people talked in the past and the dialects and all the rest, but we do know that this Shofar has been sounded at this time of year for thousands of years. So Rabbi Hoffman, would you please come forward?
Good morning. Good morning, thank you very much for welcoming us here today. We have apples and honey sticks. From the ancient tradition, I believe the honey sticks are only about 1,000 years old. But we have a custom in the Jewish community to share cards on this holiday season. And when I think of apples and honey, I think of something that we can all relate to, which was one of the cards that went around wishing the sweetness of a New Year for everybody, and everybody should dip their apples and honey, and they had their apple iPhones in a jar of honey, which we could practice to do this morning if you'd like. Maybe we could recommend that you do that after the council meets. I've been given the honor to blow the Shofar, and the words of its significance have been shared before, and I just wanted to add one more thought. The Shofar is a tool of announcement. It's there to sound its clarion call to responsibility. And when we gather in our congregations on the holiday and we hear the blast of the Shofar, more than just a call to awareness, a call to wake up to this responsibility that has been given to us as human beings, to be partners with the God of all creation, to share the responsibilities of wholeness that have been spoken of by those members of this group before. The most powerful sound that comes out of this is the call that, I believe, takes us from the self and brings us into the voice of the collective, of the community. It's a very simple call that says that something is being asked of us. And in the City of Los Angeles, as you sit in these chambers today and every day, you have a litany of requests, everything from the mundane to the most consequential concerns that face the city and even face this country. And when the Shofar blasts, I hope that you hear that call to remind you not of your own personal concerns, but your concerns of service. They're the most powerful sounds that come out, not only of the Shofar blast, but of the work that you do. They're the sounds that say that something is being asked of you, and it is your human responsibility to respond. We thank you for your service. It's an honor to stand here on behalf of the Jewish community and blow the Shofar, which I hope I do well today. With my nervousness, you never know, I'm not a trumpet blower or anything like that. But hopefully, the sound will be as renewing and as inspiring as it is for our congregations on these holidays. It's our custom that when the Shofar is blasted, we rise. So I'm going to ask everybody to please rise. And I'm going to ask you to help me by reciting the words that are used in our congregation, the Hebrew words which explain the different sounds that come out of the Shofar. The first one is... Shiva Reem. Teru'a. T'Kia Gedola.
Shana Tova, everybody, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, and city attorney, Mike Fuhr. And thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, and City Attorney Mike Fuer, and Member Mitchell Englander. At this time, I'm going to look to Ms. Martinez and see if she's ready. It appears as she is for our second presentation of the day.
You're better than the mariachi doo with a trumpet.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to reconsider, rather, item 1V from the council meeting agenda of Wednesday, this past Wednesday, September 16th. Council file 15-0160-S259 relative to a Department of Building and Safety lien for the property at 4901 Marathon Street in my district, to reconsider that.
Okay, let's quickly vote on reconsideration of that item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I move to continue this item to Tuesday, October 6th.
Okay, so without objection, you have that, Madam Clerk? Okay, so without objection.
Thank you.
That is the order. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. On today's agenda, item number 10, we are recognizing October as Girls Empowerment Month. In our city, women remain underrepresented in many fields such as business, media, STEM careers, public service, and public safety. Gender equity issues are worse for women who live in poverty. Here in Los Angeles, 70% of the student population lives in poverty. As part of Girls Empowerment Month within the City of Los Angeles, the city will provide support to launch initiatives through the L.A. Fund that will help girls and young women increase access to education and employment opportunities. The L.A. Fund is launching Girls Build L.A., an empowerment program that will engage middle and high school girls in identifying challenges that women and girls face in their communities. No one's better equipped to identify the underlying causes of these problems than the women who face them every day. The L.A. Fund seeks to empower these students and give them resources to research, innovate, and develop solutions. The initiative will be kicked off on September 29th with a special West Coast premiere of the screening of the inspiring film He Named Me Malala. This will be followed by the launch of the Girls Build L.A. Leadership Challenge, which will give 50 teams of girls from schools throughout Los Angeles the opportunity to identify a key problem in their community and work together to develop solutions. But here with me are...
Ms. Martinez, I'm going to stop you for one minute.
Sure.
This is her presentation. I don't want to see hands waving. You should not and cannot disrupt what it is that Ms. Martinez is doing now. So to Mr. Akala, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Spindler, just, this is her time, so be respectful. And this is your warning. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to the audience about that interruption. But here within the city, we are also doing our part to help build the leadership and create the pipelines for women in non-traditional careers. Today, I want to recognize the LAPD Cadet Program and the LAFD Fire Academy Programs. I have with me this morning Chief, Battalion Chief Kristen Crawley, who is currently Acting Assistant Chief and the highest-ranking female firefighter in LAFD. She is commander of professional... She is commander of professional standards for LAFD, and she runs the Valley and the Harbor Youth Fire Academies. She has done an exceptional job in her position, where she has high school classes that start at 50% male and 50% female, and her success rate with female graduates is 44%. When we talk about recruiting more women into the LAFD, this is exactly the pipeline that we should be following. And I want to commend her for everything that she's done and for amazing service. Congratulations, Battalion Chief Kristen Crawley.
Thank you so much.
Also with us, I'd like to recognize Mercedes Alvarado, who served three years in LAFD Youth Fire Academy, where she excelled in all three levels as a top cadet. She received her EMT license and is currently in a community college working towards her degree. She volunteers her time as a lead instructor in both Harbor and Valley Youth Fire Academies, and she is currently going through the recruitment process at LAFD. Congratulations, Mercedes Alvarado.
You're taller than me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have with us Chief Laura Mendoza, the chief cadet, who oversees 6,000 cadets in the LAPD Cadet Program. She has spent over 3,500 hours serving the community as an LAPD cadet. She has held a 4.0 GPA or higher for eight consecutive years and is currently a sophomore at Cal State L.A. Thank you, Laura, for serving as a shining example of leadership. And lastly, I want to recognize Tabitha Thierd, who currently serves as a Los Angeles Human Relations Youth Ambassador. She has given a keynote address in Washington, D.C. to over 500 youth from all over the nation about being civically engaged, the importance of having the youth voice represented, and how students can use their Youth Ambassador Program to achieve this. Tabitha will be starting her own initiative, bringing together youth citywide to have a dialogue and provide education-based workshops on health education. She is currently attending West L.A. College and will be transferring to Loyola Marymont next summer.
It's nice to be back in front of you guys again. First, I wanted to start off by thanking Herb Wesson for allowing us to come back here again. It's nice seeing you. I also want to give a shout out to Joe Busciano. I don't see him, but these...
He's here.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so Herb and Joe have supported the Youth Ambassador Program since it began, and I really appreciate that, because this program has changed my life and the life as well of other women throughout the city. As a Youth Ambassador, I have gotten some experiences throughout the world that I don't think most people my age have. And I want to thank the Human Relations Commission for building this program, and a special shout out to Sheldon Cruz for coming up with this idea and constantly being a great example of a powerful person who uses their power for good. It's hard for me to explain how much my world has changed because of the Youth Ambassador Program, but I feel like I have a voice that I can use now because of it. And I would hope to see more Youth Ambassadors throughout the city, especially more young women, so that one day, there is ambassadors throughout every neighborhood in the city, and each ambassador has a voice that they can use to fuel change in L.A. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the award, Mr. R.
I just want to congratulate, congratulate you. You are so impressive, and one of the best meetings I ever had with a young person was the one I had with you. And to see you here, calm and cool and articulate, you know, really makes my heart beat a little faster, because you are the future, and if you are the future, we're in pretty darn good hands.
Thank you again for everything.
No, thank you.
And like I said, I hope we expand this program so there's more youth like me to make the future even brighter.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
I also wanted to just acknowledge Rebecca Ninberg, the president of the L.A. City Commission on the Status of Women, who's here with us today. Thank you very much for all your support.
Give her a round of applause.
And I also want to recognize Emily Williams from County Supervisor Mark Willie Thomas's office, who also introduced a similar resolution. Thank you very much.
Emily, give her a round of applause. Give our best to the supervisor.
The supervisor had his, the Girls Empowerment Resolution in the county earlier this week. So I wanted to thank him for bringing this to our attention as well. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present a resolution recognizing Girls Empowerment Month to the L.A. Fund and commend them for their work and dedication in preparing young girls to be the next generation of leaders in Los Angeles. And with us, we have my good friend Melissa Infuzino, who worked with me at L.A. USD and is doing an amazing job at L.A. Fund, and I couldn't thank her enough. Thank you so much.
Melissa, welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be acknowledged today. We're proud to be a part of everyone that you see here. This work is incredibly important to us. We work with schools throughout Los Angeles, and this project is really near and dear to our hearts, because we're going to be working with young women and giving them the opportunity to tell us what they need, empowering them, giving them grants and resources in a real sense of agency to solve for those challenges. It isn't about us going in and saying, "This is what we think you should be doing." It's really about shining a light on the issues as they see them through their eyes and empowering them to solve for them. So thank you for this opportunity to be recognized and for all the work that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, thank you. You've been on a roll. I mean, you've put together...
I'm just a little busy these days.
You've put together some phenomenal programs.
Thank you.
You've had some great presentations last week, and so, your colleagues, we appreciate you, and we thank you. Let's give them all one more round of applause.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you very much.
At this point in time, again, we want to congratulate you, but I'd like, I'm going to look to my left to see if my dear friend of 100 years is ready, Mr. Sadiya. I said 100 years, you knew I was talking about you.
Are you guys L.A. Gear Up?
Yes.
He's the adult there.
We do SATs.
Yeah.
Can you write an upper bound?
No, they're not that good. They're automatic in the program. They serve every student. They serve every student in the town.
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
So you'll love this. You know how hard we worked for the Dream Act, all of us collectively, to make that a reality. Yesterday, I was at the Mexican consulate, and I ran into this professor, and he said, "Great work on the Dream Act, but you've got to do more to help high school students." And I thought, "Oh, my God," right? Really love that appreciation for our work. And then I realized that today, we're doing this presentation on L.A. Gear Up, and it's an incredible, incredible program. Let me tell you about what it is. Gear Up stands for Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Programs. It's a turnkey operation. It's a national program that serves communities throughout the United States with funds from the Department of Education. And in its 15 years, the program has provided services for over 13,000 students at over 20 campuses. And you understand this, you've got low-income kids, first-time into school, parents too busy, working, language challenges, no experience with college, and you've got to try to convince them that you want to go to college and that you should be preparing for your LSAT or doing your homework or filling out applications, and, you know, your father wants you to go pull weeds in the backyard. And I'm going to stop talking about myself now. And so, L.A. USD has recently been awarded, for the third time, competing nationally, a multi-year award, this time totaling close to $13 million. And these resources are going to support 4,000 students at Berendow Middle School, LaConte Middle School, Young Oak Kim Academy, Bernstein Complex, God bless her, Robert F. Kennedy Complex, God bless him, West Adams Preparatory High School, beginning in the middle school through high school, graduation, and into their first year of college. In honor of National Gear Up Week, I'd like to recognize the work of Gear Up for L.A. Team. They've worked tirelessly, and they've done an incredible job, and I'm asking them, they're here. Who are you? Ms. Michaela Vasquez-Hahn and Ms. Lois Bramwell, the directors of Gear Up for L.A. I want to thank them both for their efforts. You see the young faces behind me. We are doing a lot, and we will do more, but we're doing a lot to be proud of, to help young people be successful in the city. Mr. Rue, you've got a new charge, and I think that some of this will be under your purview so that we can get some coordination and maximize our efforts in this city. But I'm very proud to be here with you for National Gear Up Week. Please come up. Yeah, I want to introduce you. Yeah. Talk about your program. Michaela, come up.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Michaela Vasquez-Hahn, and I'm really proud to represent the Gear Up for L.A. Program. We are a college access program, and we are working very hard to make sure that we can have a workforce here in the City of Los Angeles that makes us all proud. We provide everything for our students. We do anything you can think of to help make them more competitive and more eligible and able to graduate from college. We also are able to work with the parents and with teachers, because it takes a village. So thank you so much, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
So on behalf of this gracious city that thanks you for all the work that you do, we would love to give you this recognition.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, let me share that with you.
Let's put it down so we can see your face.
We resemble that. Awesome. We're going to go in the back. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sadiya. Let's give him another round of applause. You're preparing our leaders of tomorrow, and we appreciate that. Okay, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that item nine is to be continued, and you know what date that's to be continued on?
Yes, Mr. President. There's a request to continue item nine to September 22nd.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Also, we do have more than 12 members at this time, so do we want to deal with the ordinance?
Yes, it's item four.
So let's vote on item four for reconsideration. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. That's approved, and Mr. Rue, the floor is yours. Okay, guys, don't disrupt. We're having a presentation by Mr. Rue. David, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, last week, under your leadership, we had a discussion of remembrance of 9/11, and in line with recognition and supporting our heroes, today I'm excited to extend this council's appreciation to Mr. Martin Cohen. Mr. Martin Cohen is also joined by Mr. Alan Barper, Ms. Vicky Nussbaum, who is also the executive director of the Sherman Oaks Chamber, and Sergeant Pedrosa of Van Nuys. Mr. Cohen is a member of the San Fernando Valley Business Community. He has been a community leader throughout the City of Los Angeles and through his carpeting and flooring business, and in partnership with America's Bravest, a program of the Steven Seiler Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Mr. Cohen... Mr. Cohen has worked to build high-tech homes for our heroes, for our veterans, and in particular, those with severely injured service members across our country. The homes built by the foundation through its Building for America's Bravest program are designed to be energy-efficient, easily accessible, and tailored to meet the needs of individuals, allowing our heroes to live better and more independent lives. Through his carpeting and flooring business, Mr. Cohen has already completed more than a dozen homes and will provide flooring and installation services for each home constructed by the Building for America, with more than 30 new homes scheduled over the next two years. I want to extend my appreciation for his continued effort to support and improve the lives of the men and women in uniform. And thank you, and with that, I'd like to bring on Mr. Cohen to make a few remarks.
Please come forward, sir. And before you speak-- And again, Mr. City Attorney, you know, we'd be getting disruptions from the crowd, and we don't allow people to speak when they're speaking, and we will not tolerate them speaking when others have the floor. Mr. Cohen, I can't, on behalf of this council, thank you enough for what you do. I think that you are a perfect example that all of us can be patriots in our own way. So, to-- And you didn't have to do this, but you decided to. So, I want you to know that the individuals on this council, that our staff salute you, thank you for all that you have done, and we look forward to the many things that are gonna be asked of you to do in the future. You are a patriot. Can we give Mr. Cohen a round of applause?
Thank you, Councilman Wesley.
This is your last warning. Come on, let's be kind.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Ru. Thank you for-- I am privileged and honored to be here today, as mentioned, with my friend Alan Barmer, friend of over 50 years, and with Vicky Nussbaum, director of the Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce, which I am a proud member of, a proud businessman, small businessman, in the San Fernando Valley for over 40 years, a business started by my father and continuing on with myself. In 1990, we chose to join a fledgling cooperative in this country called Carpet One, which has now grown to be the largest floor-covering cooperative in North America with over 1,000 stores. As part of my relationship with Carpet One, it has brought me to join in with many good causes. Certainly, the one that means the most to me is the Building for America's Bravest Foundation. And this foundation was started in the last year, and as the councilman mentioned, it builds smart homes for these catastrophically injured servicemen, and it's something that-- it's a small token to them, as far as I'm concerned, for what they have given to our country in serving us and protecting our freedoms that we enjoy today. There is-- There were several that I've met over the last couple of years. One in particular, a gentleman by the name of Travis Mills. If I may, Travis Mills was in the Army out of Manchester, Maine. "Help my soldiers," Travis Mills yelled several times at a medic, minutes before the staff sergeant lost his legs and arms after stepping on an improvised explosive device. Travis, a weapons squad leader, brought over a dozen soldiers and an explosive ordinance disposal team to an abandoned Afghanistan National Army security post on April 2, 2012. Soon after entering the area, the bomb exploded. As a result of his extensive injuries, Travis suffered the loss of both arms and legs. Travis has a no-nonsense approach to the devastating injuries he sustained. "Life's hard, and this kind of stuff happens," he says. "I've always been positive. I've always been motivated. I have to get better. I got a wife and child to take care of." In October 2014, Travis, his wife Kelsey, and his daughter Chloe received their new smart home. When asked about what receiving a new smart home means for him and his family, Travis says, "This is the final step in my rehabilitation. The last bit of independence and freedom is owning a home." You can visit Travis on his website. You can visit the Bravest, BuildingForAmerica'sBravest.org. Yesterday was another special day for our company. In support of this program, the Stephen Siller Foundation Tunnel to Towers wanted to thank Carpet One stores around the country for their efforts, and they dispensed firemen from the New York City Fire Department to travel to every store across the country. And yesterday, we were presented with a shadow box with a piece of steel from the towers in New York, and this is something that we will treasure and will remind us every day of what this country stands for. Also, Fireman Peter Donidi did give to me some pins from the Tunnel for Tower Foundation, and I'd like to present one to all the members, if I may.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
And, Mr. Cohen, on behalf of the city council, I would like to present you with this proclamation, and thank you so much for all the service that you've done. And as the council president had mentioned, it's important that we recognize those individual patriots, business owners, who are going out of their way on their own to help America's Bravest. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Ru--
Thank you, Mr. President.
This was a great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harris Dawson, I want to recognize you at this point.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Mr. Ru will be joining me for this presentation to recognize National Prostate Cancer Month. We're presenting a proclamation to individuals today that we'll hear from later because we want to emphasize the importance of information and early detection regarding prostate cancer. This disease is one that can be treated, and folks can recover from at nearly a 100% rate should they detect it early enough and get treatment. Even though that's true, at this time, African-American and Latino men in particular suffer a fatality rate from prostate cancer much harder, much higher than the majority of population, largely because there's late detection and late treatment. All of us know, I think everybody around the room, with the exception of maybe Mr. Ru, when you get 40 years old and you go get your checkup, you have to get the check for prostate cancer. And, Mr. President, they had me scared, I'll do my 30s, that it was just gonna be a torturous process, but I'm happy to report, we went and got checked. It wasn't that bad at all. I want everybody to know that and encourage everybody who hasn't gotten checked to get checked for prostate cancer because, again, the earlier we find out about it, the better our chances for successful treatment and recovery. Mr. Ru?
Mr. Ru's time will come, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Actually, Mr. Council President, I just turned 40, and thanks to my own reminder today, I will fortunately, unfortunately, be making an appointment to get checked. But I am pleased to join my fellow colleague, Councilmember Harris Dawson, in recognizing September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month to encourage increased awareness of this disease and the importance of early detection and treatment. About 21,060 California men, California men, are diagnosed with prostate cancer just in 2015 alone, and approximately 3,180 are predicted to die of this disease. Although prostate cancer is the most common cancer and the second-leading cause of death among men, when detected early, it boasts some of the most highest survival rates, which is why, as my colleague has pointed out, that it is important for men to start that discussion with their doctors at the age of 40, which is right now for me. And we must continue to emphasize the risks and explain how lives can be saved through awareness and the work being done by health and advocacy organizations throughout Los Angeles.
So, on behalf of the city council and Councilmember Ru and I, we want to present this proclamation and invite Earl Jones, who's on the board of directors of the California Prostate Cancer Coalition and a survivor of prostate cancer.
Mr. Jones, please come forward.
Thank you very much. I stand here representing not only the California Prostate Cancer Coalition, but also the many men here in Los Angeles. And we certainly thank the council for adopting this proclamation. It is a testament to your support of getting men, making men aware of this deadly disease. So many are not aware that this is a risk out there for them. It also is a testament to your advocacy of support for measures to fight this deadly disease, and so, we appreciate that. You already heard from Councilman Ru and Harris Dawson all the statistics. You know, there are about 2.9 million men who have been diagnosed with prostate cancer who are still living today. I happen to be among those as a 10-year survivor. Yet, 30,000 men, almost 30,000, still will die this year at the rate of one every 18 minutes, and it is a deadly disease. It's a deadly disease, and every man needs to take control of his prostate health. It's interesting here that a man will have a higher chance of getting this disease, prostate cancer, than his wife's breast cancer, and almost an equal chance of dying from it as his wife's breast cancer. Yet, next month, which is Breast Cancer Month, you will see pink all over the place. I think you'll see pink all year, really, but very little blue here. When I came in here, there was a blue screen up there, and I really appreciated that. But there's very little blue during this month or any other time of the year, and we've got to change that. We've got to create this awareness within the community, and this proclamation will help to do that. The key to surviving this disease, as you've already heard, is early detection. We advocate early detection 100%. 100% survival rate if it's caught early. So, we encourage every man within my voice, and will read this proclamation, to take heed and start taking control of their prostate health. Start a conversation with your physician or even take advantage of the many community resources out there, and there are resources out there. No matter when you start, the key is to start getting screened. Start taking control of your health. Again, thank you very much for this proclamation.
Mr. Jones, thank you. Mr. Jones, thank you, and we are excited that you are a survivor and that you are passing this along. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for being so articulate on the subject.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Ru, thank you as well. We'll go to Item 11. I've got Item 11 members held by cards. It's Mr. Walsh, Mr. Akala, Mr. Herman, I believe, and Mr. Spindler. Come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDims. This concerns funding for the Hollywood Medians, M-E-D-I-A-N-S, project. First time I set foot on a Hollywood median was 1966. That's almost a half-century ago. You could eat off the street. You could eat off the median then. It was so clean in Hollywood. Those days are long since gone. This is $65,000, public benefits. It should be about half of that. The other $32,500 is political corruption, but this is to increase Hollywood mobility. I would suggest any tourist, that being mobile means staying away and running away from Hollywood. It's very, very dangerous now to be in Hollywood, and this Hollywood Medians project isn't going to make it any safer. It will make it safer for the people who beat you up and shoot you and kill you and rape you to get away because they won't trip and fall. Hollywood East, and this concerns where Vermont and Hollywood intersect. This, I'm telling you right now, Hollywood is very dangerous. We don't need any work on the medians. We need work on cleaning up Hollywood and getting rid of the gangs because the gang warfare is spilling over into Hollywood. No Medians Project money. HollywoodHighlands.org. I've been there for half a century.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Akala, Item 11.
I agree. We need-- We need median work, but my suggestion is that you should actually close Hollywood Boulevard to traffic because I've seen too many deaths, you know, people dying from getting hit by cars. So, the medians, what do they do? They help you cross the street? Is that what they do? But they're in the wrong place. They're way over there by Vermont. They should be over there down by Hollywood and Highland where people are actually walking around, being tourists, and buying all that crap they don't really need. You know what I mean? Souvenir. Anyway, most of our lives, we spend buying crap we don't really need, but-- Oh, it's called-- What is it? What's it called? Democracy? No. It's called commerce. Commerce.
Stay on the subject.
Yeah. Yeah, the subject is you should make it safer for people that are shopping till they drop because that's the way we run our economy. People need to buy things they don't really need.
He's not talking about this.
Come on, Mr. Akala, get back.
Hollywood Boulevard, it's not safe. It really isn't. I bet you never go there, City Attorney. I bet you never go there.
Get on the subject. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Los Consejeros haciendo fondos discreciones para comiar con fondos moritipales extendidos y poner en marcha esta enectivia a largo Plaza de millones de ofero y correts relative to funding for Hollywood East Vermont Median Projects. I sound like Noreen Grande now. Yeah, yeah, that's how it goes. Transfer appropriate $65,000 in Hollywood Mobility Trust Fund account in Council District 13 Public Benefits Trust Fund. My Spanish and English, it sounds good now. I got Transportation Grant Fund number 65594 account, number 94J756, Hollywood East Vermont Median Projects. Now, los posibles de proyectos no son estudovo de cantapartopol a checatar a Los Angeles departamento transpasiones-- transpasiones to make any correcciones o acrucacafaciones a la los abrones transpasiones en orden efecte que farte quer internet este motion. So the real idea behind all this is, councilmen, you have not made our communities clean in regards to all our medians, and I find this offensive. But the disruption of our medians for these projects to escalate all this money just for mobility, I find it fraudulent and corruption, because today we find that there is real no safe access or mobility in Los Angeles, as many of you have heard of the $1.4 billion settlement for access on our sidewalks and streets.
Let's stay on the subject, Mr. Herman.
To the funding, while I'm not talking irrelevant, I'm talking about the median projects, because median projects connect us to sidewalks and streets. So I'm not off topic.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Spindler.
Fucking motion relative to fucking funding the motherfucking Hollywood East fucking Vermont median's fucking project. Fucking recommendations for cocksucker council action, subject to the shit approval of the shit mayor. One, fucking transfer and fucking appropriate $65,000 fucking Simoleons in the Hollywood Mobility bitch trust fund account in the Council District 13. That's all you need to know. $65,000 for a stupid, nothing bullshit project, just like the rest of all of this agenda, all of CD 13's agendas are about making Hollywood so pretty. Are we gonna make it so pretty? How about all the people getting killed? $65,000 to beautify the medians. And the reason they want to beautify the medians is to close them off so the homeless cannot pitch their tents. They like to pitch their tents so they can sleep, but no. $65,000 for something that should cost half of that, overpaying corruption for another stupid project, and in the end, they'll just let all the plants die like they do over in CD 10's Meridians in front of the school on Wilshire. And Hollywood East Vermont will look like crap like it does now. There's no difference. You can't beautify anything with $65,000. Give $65,000 instead to all the homeless you see today. And they're blowing the horn in the shofar. [makes horn sound]. Give the $65,000 to the homeless, [makes horn sound], and not to the Hollywood Mobility project, [makes horn sound].
Your time is expired. Mr. City Attorney.
To the public and city staff and councilmembers, please be advised that the dress of the members of the public and the language in public comment periods cannot constitutionally be restricted unless the dress or comments actually disrupt the meeting. Any city staff members or visitors who may be offended by any language that may be used by any speaker should feel free to leave the council chamber until public comment has ended.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to tag along with what City Attorney Officer said, I apologize for anyone who is watching the deranged rantings and ravings of the last several speakers. And to clarify for the record, Hollywood crime rate is actually holding very steady with the all-time lows from 50 years ago, despite a few high-profile incidents. Hollywood is as safe as it's been in the last 50 years. I also want to just refer back to the Vermont corridor improvements. The Vermont Business Improvement District, which was formed nine years ago, volunteers have spent countless hours on the improvement of the Vermont corridor, and that's why we are identifying, have identified funding to improve the medians, which is another step in improving that entire corridor in the eastern portion of Hollywood, making the community safer, more vibrant, and improving the quality of life for residents and people who do business in Hollywood. Hollywood is open for business, and I also want to compliment the work and the efforts of Northeast Division LAPD and Hollywood Division LAPD with their Entertainment District focus, which is really making great strides in reducing crime in Hollywood. So I encourage everyone to visit Hollywood. It's safer than it's been in the last 50 years. And I also applaud all of those on the Vermont Business Improvement District for all the work they've been doing, improving the look, feel, and quality of life along that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Krikorian, we disregarded, okay, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let us go now to item 10. It's called Special by Cards. Mr. Krikorian.
As they're coming up, I'd like to ask that item 1H be continued for two weeks, please.
Yeah.
Well, it will have to be a little longer than that. Madam Clerk, when would we, we would have to continue this until when?
Until October 6.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. So again, item 10. I have cards from the public. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Akala. Mr. Herman. Mr. Spindler. Antonio Ramirez and Mr. Barajas. Yes, sir.
It is not fair to speak before Antonia. She's a woman.
Stay on the subject.
The subject is gender equality. How come she gets to speak last?
Speak on the subject.
Yeah. Gender equality. Pay the ladies what you pay the guys. But I'm willing to pay the ladies even more than I pay the guys. Why not? You know, they're cute. They're nice. They're well-mannered. So I wish to hold one minute, because really, what else can you say? Be nice to the ladies. Pay them what they deserve. You know, don't shortchange the ladies. I can't remember the last time I shortchanged a lady. 55 seconds, that's a long time. I went over my minute, but I guess I'll continue then. Oh, yeah, talking about equality, there is Ms. Nuri Martinez as president of this illustrious... Where are you guys?
He is not talking about this.
Yeah. Ladies should have an equal voice in society. Ask Donald Trump. He's calling all the Mexicans rapists and all that, and that's what he is. He's a rapist.
He is not talking about the item.
He doesn't respect women. Look at what he said to that lady in the debate, and the lady...
Thank you, Mr. Akala. Thank you very much for that. Our next speaker, Herman, on item 10.
Good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Herman and I regarding Ms. Martinez's relative addressing of my big red dress in issues of gender inequality. Yay! Yay! And disgranting October girls, those beautiful girls in her big flurry red dresses.
Mr. Herman, the color of my dress has nothing to do with this item, sir.
I'm talking reference to girls empowerment. I have my red dress, and Mr. Herman loves to kiss me because it wears red.
That's your second warning, Mr. Herman. You either stick to the item, or we're gonna move on.
...is to hereby acknowledge and commit the addressing, addressing, I'm not talking about dresses, I'm talking about addressing issues of gender in the designated month of October for girls empowerment. I just love girls in red dresses. Look at her. Isn't she beautiful?
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next speaker. Sergeants, can you show Mr. Herman to a seat, please?
He's done. He's done.
Thank you. You're disrupting the meeting along with Peppa the Pig. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Okay, I have to go into Nuri mode. Resolution relative addressing issues of gender inequality and designating October as Girls Empowerment Month in the City of Los Angeles. Recommendation per council action, resolve to hereby acknowledge all the Peppita Pigs and commit to addressing issues of gender equality and designate October as Girls Empowerment Month, yay, in the City of Los Angeles. How do you empower girls? The first thing you do is make sure they don't get too fat, because obesity is not empowerment. Obesity is diabetes. So don't get too fat, girls. Also, to empower yourselves, you have to learn how to dress appropriately as a girl in Los Angeles. You have to go online and look at all the music videos and look at how the girls dress in the videos.
Madam President, he is not talking about the item.
Stop fucking interrupting. You have to empower a month in the City of Los Angeles. Girls have to learn how to dress to empower themselves. You gotta dress like a whore, and that's how you empower yourself.
This has nothing to do with the item, sir. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. You're done. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Antonio Ramirez. Now you're disrupting the meeting again, Mr. Spindler. Please sit down. Sorry about that, Ms. Ramirez. We're gonna start the clock. Can you start her time?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
There is ladies, and then there are lesbians. I have been a victim of lesbians, and I'm not alone. We are here to, we are...
Ms. Ramirez, this has nothing to do with the item. You have to stick to item number 10.
Women. We are talking about women, the empowerment of women for this month. Now, girls include lesbian women. Can we not include lesbian women with girls? Because we are all women, and yet they've chosen to be lesbian.
Women's sexuality has absolutely nothing to do with this item, ma'am.
Absolutely does. We're talking about inequities. There are inequities within these two types of women. Lesbians can be bullies, and women all know that. Women who are law-abiding, and then there are lesbians who are aggressive, bullies, hostile, combative, and that's what I want to show.
She is not talking about this item.
What do you know? You don't get bullied by lesbians in a woman's bathroom.
Ms. Ramirez, inherently disruptive of this meeting, where she can speak to the topic, she cannot speak to the city attorney. Noise in the audience is inherently disruptive of this meeting. I gotta take a moment to apologize to the entire city of Los Angeles, who watches our meetings, listening to these morons with their racist, sexist, homophobic comments who come to our podium every single meeting. I have to apologize to the people of Los Angeles for that. Unfortunately, court decisions recognize comments that are as offensive as what we've just heard as protected by the First Amendment. But noises that are going on right now in the audience as I'm speaking are distracting our attention away from our work, and they are inherently disruptive. I would ask, Madam President, that there be no more warnings, that the next sound we hear from the audience causes that person to be excluded from our meeting, so we can get on with the work of the people of the City of Los Angeles during our council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Next speaker. Next speaker, Byron Barajas, are you here?
Well, I think in an economic downturn, people who discriminate against females or vice versa, I think the issue here would be, how do you actually resolve the inequity issue? Yes, you can designate a month to reflect that women in general should be respected. But I think the issue here would be, why is it happening? And I think addressing that issue is, has to deal with education. Education on both sides, male and female. Ms. Martinez has shown in her presentation that there are individuals who aren't doing the cause of promoting what I would consider as competence, whether it comes from a male or a female. I think the issue here would be, how the hell do we get out of this dilemma of people who can't get ahead, so-called? And that's because we have an issue with society as, in general, it's just collapsing. So I think that if we consider, how do we actually resolve this issue? I think that we can actually consider that it is a problem of the way we see ourselves. How do we see the female side, and how do we see the male side? What is the role that we must have in order to have and eliminate any problems that we may have?
Thank you. That concludes cards for item number 10. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item passes. Next item, item 1.
Item 1, call special for cards.
The first speaker is Steve, and sir, I cannot make out your last name. On item 1C, I believe, is there someone named Steve Golovski? Sir, then you're next. It's probably you. I just can't read your last. Okay. Come on, come forward.
And Madam President, as he's coming, there's been a request to continue item 1C to Friday, October 16.
Sir, there's been a request to continue your item for two weeks, but you can go ahead and speak on your item if you wish.
Yeah, okay. This is a HPOZ issue. A neighbor of mine reported a overheight hedge, and I presented prevailing information that the hedge pre-existed in the home. I am a certified Mills Act house, so the hedge was grandfathered in as part of the HPOZ agreement. I have an email from the City Planning Department that identifies the case number. It's case number 235475, and it states the case has been dropped, because I presented all the HPOZ approvals and information that this was an invalid complaint. And, you know, why I'm here spending, you know, my day fighting something that's, you know, six, seven, eight years old is beyond me. I have proof that this was dropped by the city. And I have the book, the HPOZ book with my address in it, with the hedge in question. And this is the homes that are approved in the Melrose Hill Preservation Plan. The hedge is there, and this is the reason why it was dropped. I am also the president of the Melrose Hill Neighborhood Homeowner Association, and I'm on the HPOZ Advisory Board. And I just find that the city is spending its time dragging something up like this when it has been dropped, and forcing me to take a day off work and come down here and fight this is just...
Thank you, sir. There's been a request to continue your item for two weeks. Madam Clerk, in two weeks, what's that date? Madam Clerk, what's the date?
This item was continued to October 16.
Thank you, sir. It's been continued for two weeks, October 16. Mr. O'Farrell?
Are we talking about item 1I here?
1C.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next speaker, John Walsh.
And Madam President, as Mr. Walsh is coming, there's been requests to continue item one I to October 6.
Okay, without objection, that would be continued, item one I until October 6.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. These are liens by the Building and Safety Department. Some of these liens are very unjust. What happens is people come down here with their unjust liens, and Herman talks to them and counsels them, and they come up here, and you've seen it, and when they know what their rights are, you pull back and remove the liens. We have saved, I just want to say everyone out here, we, and you can call us whatever you want, gadflies, we have saved you, the property owners, millions of dollars over the last 10 years. People show up here, here's a lien, $1,300, $2,000, North Rampart. Many of these people paid the liens without coming down here. When you come down here and assert your rights and talk to us, the liens, anybody who watches this show knows I'm true, they always pull back, they always bring you to the side, and I want to say this, and this is for anybody who watches this, nobody...
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, William Lang, item one C. Are you here? This item has been continued until October 16th, but I see no William Lang is here. Thank you. Next speaker, Rudy Vialla? Is there a Rudy Vialla here?
Good morning.
Good morning. You're on, you're speaking on item one D?
Yeah, good morning. How are you? I came here in behalf of Dr. Payne. He's not in town. He should be here in about a week from now. There's something that I, he told me to take care of for the amount of $1,300 for his pool being dirty. He has papers that he's been having a pool guy service for over eight years. So actually, he doesn't know, or he wants for you to give him an extension, maybe for about a week from now, so he can come in? Or two weeks?
Sir, hold on for just a second. The council member from that district will...
Yeah, that would be great. We can, we can hold it for two weeks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, sir, this item will be continued for two weeks, October 16th.
October 16th, at what time?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. And if he doesn't decide, he can just pay it, right?
He said two weeks. Ms., I'm sorry, there's been a request from Councilmember Paul Corretz to continue it for two weeks, October 6, not 16.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Cynthia Green, item one H.
And Madam President, as she's coming, this item, item one H, has been continued to October 6.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm here because I received a notice, first time I received a notice saying I have a lien on our property for over $2,000, and I really don't know why. And consent in my lecture panel is illegal, which it is not. I have the paperwork confirming it is, but apparently it's based on, when I first got the lecture panel put in, it was through a friend, family friend or whatever, who didn't have a license. And so that's when I got a bill, which I paid, the first one, my husband paid, for $353, saying that we didn't have a permit. So we went through the procedures and did it the correct way, and paid somebody else to come out and redo it the correct way, more money, and then it got finalized, and that case got closed. So apparently, they have been sending a bill for the last couple of years since 2013 to our old address in New York. So, and it got penalties put on it, so now it's $2,000. And I never received anything and didn't even know about this bill until I got this notice.
There's been a request from that council office to continue your item for two weeks until October 6, and we have staff at the ropes that can speak to you about your item. But it's been continued for two weeks.
Okay, I won't be in town October 6.
You need, you need to go speak to the young woman in the green. You see her?
Yes, ma'am.
She can help you.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Juan Alcala. Mr. Alcala, you have one minute, and you need to stick to the item.
I don't need any more than one minute. You know that. I can call you whatever I want in one minute. I call you tips. I call you crooked, because you are leaning on people. You are putting liens, illegal liens on people all the time, and you get away with it. If I did that, I would be in jail for 100 years. But you, Krikorian, shut up.
He should speak to the council as a whole.
Listening, he's a councilman.
Mr. Alcala, your time is running out. Sir?
Anyway, these liens are illegal, and you know it. They're unconstitutional. You are penalizing people for having property. You can barely have a home in this city without getting nicked from every side. Go to hell, Krikorian.
Speaker is Herman. You have one minute.
Don't shoot, don't shoot. It's only a lien. And we've come here to protest on behalf of every person on these two pages and a half of liens. They are unconstitutional. You did not serve the public. What they certified mail in their hand to the right individual was brought out by the first gentleman who said, "Here, I paid it." And yet, you don't offer them no receipt when they leave their council chamber. You offer them no parking arrangements when they have to return on a deferred, and you don't offer them not even a glass of water for the inconvenience of your bullshit on liens. First Amendment right to come in here and protest this illegal process of your due process of fucking liens. Stop putting liens on people's lives and making it a harmful situation. I demand you waive all these liens today, and you revoke them at this moment on behalf of all the public. Thank you.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler. You have one minute left.
Yes, the evil liens. Nury, why? Look at CD 11. Look at the man who came here with his entire documentation, and what happens with CD 11? Like everything else in CD 11, a lien of $720.06, you get fucked in the ass for $720.06 plus a lost day's worth of work, because they have to continue it for two weeks instead of standing up and saying, "We're wrong. The man's right. There is no reason for this lien. Nothing. Nothing here is legal." And indeed, the nice people showed up, can't get cancellation. So you're talking about the Day of Holiness. Look at CD 2. African-American woman from Paul Corretz cannot allow, and Krikorian, a black woman to live in a home in CD 2.
Next speaker is Antonio Ramirez. Item one, ma'am.
The City of Los Angeles and the City Attorney's Office and the Building and Safety Department must enforce the rule of laws and collect all liens for non-compliance code violations, toxic noise nuisances, and all nuisances. Los Angeles must set an example to all wetbacks and gangbangers that peaceful habitability, quality of life, and quiet enjoyment will be rigorously enforced. We will no longer tolerate any kind of chango nuisances, especially by these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers, no more. Los Angeles is going to take action against these gangbangers and wetbacks. If not Donald Trump, God bless Donald Trump, it will be the people of Los Angeles.
Ms. Ramirez, you have to stick to the, to the item. Item one is on liens.
Tougher, stronger building and safety. We need a tougher, stronger building and safety. We need a new city attorney's office and new city attorneys that have thirst and heart to correct the violations in Los Angeles. The toxic noise, the dump, the trash, all that is outrageous. It no longer will be tolerated. Get rid of the city attorneys, get rid of most of the council members, and let's repair Los Angeles and restore Los Angeles. Hasta la vista, city attorneys. Hasta la vista. Krikorian, kiss everybody's ass.
She is not talking about...
Thank you very much. That concludes cards on item one. That concludes cards on item one. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to public comment. Nancy Allen, is she here?
Good afternoon. I wanted to talk about the Space Preservation Act, which was introduced into Congress by a senator. It didn't pass, however, there's been several cities and counties around California that have enacted it, and I'm actually asking that Los Angeles look into it. It's regarding organized stalking and harassment of citizens. We do, I am one of the members of an organization, a nonprofit by the name of Freedom from Covert Harassment, and we have over 200 members who are centrally located around Los Angeles counties, who are actually victims of organized stalking and harassment. And we've dropped off documentation and information to many of the councilmen's offices and have requested meetings. We do have professional people, I myself am an MSW, and we would like to be able to present documentation to substantiate our request. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is this public, is this public comment?
Yes, it is, sir.
Don't we get two minutes?
No, you don't. One minute.
Oh, we'll have to see what that, what you say about that in court. Yes, my name is Prentice Jenkins. I'm an activist since 1991, and I publish the City Life Newsletter. I want to talk about also organized gang stalking, but actually, gang stalking by homosexual firemen and homosexual cops, yes, there are thousands of homosexual firemen and homosexual cops on the down-low. Probably a lot of down-low men standing around here. And those firemen stalk people. I testify over at the Board of Police Commission. Laugh if you want, but your husband or your wife ain't being stalked. I bet for you were being stalked, you wouldn't laugh. It ain't a joke. The post-traumatic stress disorder in the police and fire department is at epidemic levels, and the way they deal with it is stalking.
Thank you. The next speaker is Omar Mustafa.
Hello, my name is Omar Mustafa Mohammed Baldwin. I'm the founder and CEO of Peace Please Incorporated. Peace Please Incorporated promotes peace through arts-related events, activities, and film. Today, I'm here to say thank you all for your guys' public service. We totally appreciate it at Peace Please Incorporated. We would personally like to thank Harris Dawes with his, from moving from community coalition into office, because that's kind of what we're trying to present, to create a world of peace, to create a city of peace, a nation of peace. And we would like to promote new political ideas to better our city in Los Angeles and also our nation of America and also the world. We would like to promote new technology ideas. We would like to promote new transportation ideas. We would like to promote ideas to help the homeless and to help the hungry.
Thank you.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Anybody but Englander for supervisor. My grandmother is named Bertha Berger. I'm a Jew. Vicious anti-Semite. Margaret Lee Thomas refused to postpone the supervisor's meeting. They held it on Rosh Hashanah. It was a slap in the face to you, Mr. Corretz, but you said nothing. When Zev was over there, they respected Jews. Vile, vicious, and because he's black, he thinks politically correct, black people, politicians can be vicious, vile anti-Semites like Margaret Lee Thomas. No 2020 Olympics. Austin Butner for mayor. And as far as crackpot Krikorian is concerned, people come up to me on the street and tell me how much they like watching the TV of this show, because they said, "If it weren't for the gadflies, we wouldn't even watch it."
Next speaker is Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Okay, thank you for an opportunity to address the council. I'd like to say, first of all, I object to one minute. You know, this is becoming more and more of a dictatorship where you're curtailing and limiting the expression of the community. This is supposed to be democracy. How can it be a government for the people if you don't hear from the people? Okay? This is ridiculous. It's not an aristocracy. It's not an oligarchy. And specifically, I'd like to speak against this regentification process, which is allowing the lease or the rent to be raised more than 100%, preventing small businesses from even surviving. Okay? And just short of going to the state legislature, it's impossible to alter the law because of laissez-faire and because of free enterprise. You know, so this is ridiculous. Even in the process, this is still a democracy, not a government for the wealthy, but for all people, whether they're housed, homeless, middle or upper class. So that's for the record, not just for the showmoss and the Tom Gilmore's, but for all of us, despite who's ever lining your pockets. But I'd like to say...
Thank you very much, ma'am. Your time is up. Next speaker is Aldo Garbelini.
I enjoyed your jazz festival, Mr. Price. That was excellent.
Next speaker is Aldo Garbelini.
Good morning. I suspect that the city is not investing its affordable housing dollars in the most efficient manner possible, which is a fiduciary duty of the taxpayers of Los Angeles. Accordingly, on August 19, I submitted a Public Records Act request for two affordable housing projects funded by the city, the Park Plaza and the Pilgrim Tower Apartments, so that I could examine in more detail whether the city's investment in these projects was done in an efficient manner. Just by examining the general financial information included in the city council's report for the Park Plaza, I identified $600,000 in additional non-city funds that the developer could have contributed to the projects. These additional funds could have been used to reduce cities' existing $5 million loan to the Park Plaza project. These savings could then be used to produce more affordable housing for the needy and homeless, instead of fattening the profits of the developers that the city deals with. If the city provided the financial information that I requested, I could identify more savings for this project.
Thank you, sir.
The taxpayers of Los Angeles cannot be assured that the city's affordable housing funds benefit the target populations under the city's affordable housing programs. This is primarily due to the fact that the loan and regulatory agreements for many city-funded projects do not specify the target populations which they are required to serve. For example, the Ross and Hotel Apartments project, a 264-unit project in downtown, which received $8 million in funding from the city under its 2012 Affordable Housing Trust Fund program, is required to reserve 50% of its units for persons with special needs who are chronically homeless. This requirement is stated on page five of the city's official notice of funding availability for 2012. Yet the city's loan and regulatory agreements for the Ross and Hotel Apartments project do not specify this requirement anywhere. The loan and regulatory agreements are the legal instruments through which the city enforces the covenants that it imposes on its housing projects in exchange for the funding that the city provides to developers. Just like in the case of the Ross and Hotel Apartments, where the taxpayers of Los Angeles have no assurance that their tax dollars are benefiting the chronically homeless who are the intended tenants of this project, the same can be said of many other city-funded projects.
Thank you. Next speaker, Isai Pasas. Next speaker, Isaïe Passos. I'm sorry, Passos?
My name is Isaïe Passos. I'm president of the Regional Organization of Oaxaca, and today, we're happy to basically state that we are going to turn anti-petition to basically have a corridor mentioned as the Oaxacan Corridor here in the city of Los Angeles. A petition basically that, thank you very much, Council President Herb Wesson, that we know, we know that we count with your support, and we also hope that we can also count the support of the rest of you. Thank you very much. I just want to also mention that in California, just in California, we have 1,700,000 Oaxaqueños, but here, just in Cali, in Los Angeles, we have 400, 400 to 500,000 just living, residing here in Los Angeles. So that is the reason why it is very important for the community to have their spot, and we also want to mention that other communities like the Peruvian Village and others should also be considered, and thank you very much for your time. I know this is, thank you also for the time that you are representing our city, our community, and this is just the Oaxaqueño. We have business owners and community members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was very kind. The next, the next speaker is Oscar Dominguez.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. Thank you, President of Council Herb Wesson, and pro tempore Ms. Martinez and the city council. I'm the board member of the Latino Economic Empowerment Roundtable. We actually are supporting the different economic corridors that are happening in the city of Los Angeles, and this time, we will love everybody to support the Oaxaca Corridor, which is going to happen on Pico Boulevard. There is about 72 businesses in that corridor, and also, we will love to see happening this project in this year, and I really thank you that today, which is the Latino Heritage Month, it's something very unique that we're here together as a Latino and with all of you as a city to tell you that finally, we're going to have another Oaxaca Corridor, as we also had the Salvador Corridor, and thank you guys for everything you guys are doing for the city.
Thank you very much to the Oaxaqueño community. Thank you for being here. Next speaker, Eric Previn.
Yes, it is Eric Previn from CD2, and I'm very delighted that the Oaxaqueñas have been recognized. This is very exciting, and I'd like to thank Mr. Wesson for that, if he's going to be providing them with a street or maybe a corner, like the Korean Culture Center Inc. got one, I think even last week. Colleagues or council members who disrespect the public on a regular basis, I was just wondering if we could possibly, Mr. Sadio, I do see you over there, sir, on Rosh Hashanah, if we could maybe turn a page and try the six-month proposal, Mr. Blumenfeld, which is that we allow these fine residents up here in general public comments, got to be two minutes, I mean, everybody knows that, but on agenda items, how about even if it's, if it's on the agenda today and this body votes, let them speak. Two minutes, that's it. We will see. We may be flooded with too many interesting character, we may not, but I think it will work well against some of the influences that Mr. Krikorian rose about today, that others rise about, because we are regular residents from Los Angeles. We have things to say. We know what homelessness is. We know what to say about it, but...
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Juan Alcala.
Man, I really gotta go to the bathroom, man. You put me last. Come on. Órale. Que vivo Oaxaca, me gusta mucho la cochinita pibil y el mole oaxaqueño, pero no estoy aquí para hablar de eso. El pinching Donald Trump, Donald Trump, y el pinche Krikorian, they go one by one. They do not respect women. You know, Donald Trump is telling the lady, "You're so ugly," and the lady goes, "Well, you're even uglier." You know? Donald Trump, go fly a kite.
Donald Trump is not within the jurisdiction of the city.
Excuse me, he is. He was here last week. What are you talking about not in the jurisdiction? He's going to be your goddamn president, and we don't need a fucking redneck like that, okay? Like you.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. The next speaker is Herman.
Yeah, we don't need a fucking redneck like the city attorney, telling us that the public's commission boards, councils, and other legislative bodies of local government and agencies to aid in the conduct of the people's business, the people do not yield their sovereignty to the bodies that serve them. The people insist on remaining informed, to retain control over this legislative body that they have created. We, the fucking people, do you get it? And we will stand here, we will speak on our First Amendment right to ensure that the public's interest is overheard overall. Get it through your fucking big, thick skulls. It's not offensive. It's just an expression. And yes, I do exasperate it, and it sounds oh-so-offensive to some, but vote no for big ears Englander, vote no for county supervisor, and vote no for the Olympics, because you don't know how to manage a city budget.
Next speaker, Henry Marin.
As you know, M U defined deductions, account for every cent. Employer representatives agreed to shelter from the pay of city employees and failed to account for, and how much our employer representatives shall, agreed to take possession of and not account for. Consequently, you have to make back payments to laces and calpers. Now, what's wrong with you? You're not legally working, and we know the grand jury came here to visit y'all, so you know what y'all look like now. So y'all get to see more of the grand jury if you don't, can't take care of this on your own. And y'all, so far, you've been the largest wage theft and money laundering operation in the state of California. So it behooves you to make back payments and become honorable people instead of remaining niggerly people and taking money from we, the people.
Thank you. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Yes, nice to hear the wonderful speech by Paul "The Goat" Krikorian, who in 2000 lent himself $100,000 to run for office, and in 2015, he still hasn't paid it off. So before somebody talks shit about me, I pay my bills, pay your campaign back the $100,000, thief. You know, my family worked their ass off. My mother drove up and over to Beverly Hills to Van Nuys and died of cancer three months after her 40th birthday. I'm 45, okay? And I'm going to live to be 105, fighting you motherfuckers, because I want to make sure that the kids have a future, and they're not going to have a future with corrupt mafiosos like you running the second city, largest city in the United States. You're the ones that need to be stopped, Krikorian pig.
Thank you for that. Brian Barajas.
I think that one of the problems that we face today is how do you orient your passions to having a society? I think one of the directions that our organization in LaRouche PAC have been pushing is how do you actually now create a society that is promoting the future? And I think that starts with how do we elect a United States president? Our organization has been promoting the FDR approach with the Glass-Steagall Act around the world to shut these bastards down, the banking cartel. The other approach is how do you prevent a thermonuclear confrontation against Russia? Russia wants to eliminate ISIS in Syria, but go back to the United States and you get the problem is Obama. Throw that motherfucker out.
The next speaker is Antonio Ramirez.
Ladies and gentlemen, these council members and city attorney's office are vindictive, wicked, malevolent, corrupted, and retaliatory. They are truly the height of hypocrisy, and they venomously play the race card. As you saw Paul Krikorian, he shut me up when I talked about the lesbians, bullies, combative, and hostile, but they, he didn't shut up the African-American who talked about the gays, and I'm grateful he did, because the truth is, many gays are combative, are abusive, are vicious, like they are in the females' bathroom at the Music Center, Grant Park Bathroom, females' bathroom. Again, the women there are combative, and there's no one to tell them anything, because they're lesbians. Anyway, the individuals who are corrupted, Gilbert Sadio, Paul Krikorian, Felipe Fuentes, Mike Bonin, Mitchell Farrell, Jose Wizard, Joe Buscaino, Mitchell Englander, and Herb Wesson, we need to throw your asses out. We need to throw you out. We need to restore this city. We're going to take it back. So help me God, alive or dead.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, and that concludes public comment, colleagues. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, any announcements? Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the weather forecast being in the mid-90s in the LA basin Saturday and Sunday in triple digits in the valley, we have opportunities to cool off in the city of LA. The river recreation zones are back to functioning for another few weekends through October 1st, and you can kayak down the river at Sepulveda Basin and also in Alesian Valley. If you want information about how to do that, please call my office. Secondly, the Hollywood Pool again is open until late October on the weekends, Saturday, Sunday, from 1 to 5. I encourage anyone who can get there to cool off between the hours of 1 and 5. The address is 1122 Cole Avenue. It's at Lexington between Coanga and Cole. And lastly, the 23rd Annual Thai Cultural Day is held this Sunday, September 20th, from 11 to 5 at Barnesdale Art Park. It's organized by the Thai Community Arts and Cultural Center, the Thai Association of Southern California, the Royal Thai Consulate General, the Rotary Club of Thai Town, and other local Thai organizations. It's a day-long event of performances, art exhibition, and of course, incredibly delicious Thai cuisine. The focus is the culture of northern Thailand, and there will be various exhibition booths representing the different organizations, and I encourage everyone to come to this wonderful 23rd Annual Thai Cultural Event at Barnesdale Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and members. I'd like to announce that this evening at Westside Park, which is located at 3085 Clyde Avenue in the 10th District, we will be having a movies in the park. Last year, we had over 1,000 people. I hope we have that many or more. Tonight is very special. We're going to do something unique, Mr. Englander, that I hope you try to follow us on. We're going to show two movies at the same time. Tonight, we will be showing The Book of Life at one end of the park. At the other end, it will be Bolt. We also have some partnerships with the community partners. We will be having raffles of basketballs, soccer balls, skateboards, bicycles, a 40-inch television, a PS4 Playset Station, and Beats headphones. If there's ever a night to come and participate in a free raffle to win a phenomenal gift, it would be tonight. Starts at dusk. It starts at dusk. It's at Westside Park, which is 3085 Clyde Avenue. All, all are welcome.
Well, Ms. Isabel might just show up, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Marquis Dawson, no? Do you have an announcement, Mr. Buscaino? No? Okay, can we all rise for adjourned motions, please? Any adjourned motions on my right? None seen, none on my left, Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Madam President.
Please be respectful and remain quiet. Thank you. Mr. Englander?
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, a dear friend of mine, and in fact, a dear friend of many of ours, lost his life this past Monday, and he was an icon, a living legend, and has done so much for so many. Jim Dunn, the owner of the Airtel Plaza Hotel, passed away this past Monday. Jim was raised in the San Fernando Valley and was a proud graduate, the first class, the very first class, 1963 of Cressby High School in Encino. He went on to attend Los Angeles Valley College and UCLA. As the president and CEO of the Airtel Plaza and as a pilot himself, Jim was a strong advocate, as we all know, for Van Nuys Airport. Now, we all know also that the Airtel is located directly on the Van Nuys Airport in Ms. Martinez's district, and I appreciate you letting me lead this. Jim was truly unique and an advocate for general aviation, where he created a unique experience that pilots can taxi right up to the back gates and create a runway-to-hallway service at the Airtel. In fact, you park right next to the pool. Van Nuys Airtel is originally called, was developed by Jim Dunn and his father, Richard Dunn, along with their two other partners in 1984, with an eye towards coming to the Olympic Games. That was their whole idea. Two days after the opening ceremony, the FBI booked 50 rooms due to the hotel's prime location, and it served as the ideal operations base for the agents, as they were able to leave right from the hotel by helicopter and quickly reach anywhere in the city, avoiding traffic. For over three decades, the hotel has been an important focal point and the center for businesses within the San Fernando Valley and the region. With Jim's generosity and hosting many events, meetings, and celebrations on behalf of the community, it really, truly became the place to be. In addition to donating space at the Airtel, Jim generously donated his time. He served on the boards of the Valley Economic Alliance, the Van Nuys Airport Association, the Valley Traffic Advisory Council, co-author of VICA's Aviation Policy Committee, and was very, very active. Jim is survived by his wife and partner Christine and his son Brian, his two grandchildren, Liam and Harlow, and his sister Paula. There's a celebration of his life at the Airtel on October 4th. It's actually his birthday. He'd been 71. Jim used to, he used to tell everybody, the Airtel is where people were fed, bed, and wed. That was his slogan. He was a dear friend of mine, and he was my first client when I went into business and hung out my shingles and opened a company. He became a dear family friend, he and Christine both. He attended my daughter's bar mitzvah. We got together often, just to sit and talk about family, politics. He loved showing all his photos of his travel. He traveled all over the world. He was a phenomenal pilot and a great friend, a great man, a great leader. He loved his family so much and was so proud of his son and Christine. Right after the Northridge earthquake, he opened his entire hotel to any family that lost their, their home for free and say, "Stay as long as you need." That's how generous he was. We all know, no matter what, in good times and bad, he struggled to keep those doors open, but he never laid anybody off. He has and has had employees of the Airtel there for generations, where in fact, it's been families that worked for him for 20 and 30 years through different enterprises he owned, but also at the airport, and he treated everybody with so much respect. He's done a lot for this city, for this community, for thousands of families that he reached out to, and for those who got to know him. He was one of the most generous, kind, loving, compassionate, and passionate people. compassionate, and passionate people. He always had an opinion, no matter what, on any issue. And he would argue with you no matter what, and it was all to him, never about him. This is a guy that truly knew what it meant not to take a paycheck so he can pay his employees during hard times. And anything that we were looking at or working on legislatively or with the airport, it all went back to his staff. He wanted to make sure that no matter what, he can be someone who doesn't ever have to lay off a single employee. And that was the bottom line for him. It was never about money. It was about people. I will miss Jim greatly. And I was looking through some photos. I was with Christine last night. And I got home and was looking through some of our family albums, and I came across one of Jim. When my daughter was in eighth grade, they wanted to take a field trip to Van Nuys Airport. And so Jim helped put all that together. And he created a five-star lunch for these eighth graders on the patio. And he walks out, I got a great picture of him, and he walks out to greet everybody with a big Jack-in-the-Box head and started dancing around all the kids. He was a big hit. And because he's just always full of life. I'll miss Jim, and he'll always be in my heart. And thank you so much for letting me share great memories of Jim Dunn. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Englander, you did a fine job. Thank you very much. I know Jim would be proud of you. Our prayers go to Christine and their son during this time, and if you can please add my name to the adjourned motion.
Absolutely.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Just want to add my name to the adjourned motion as well. Known Jim since, not quite as long as you, but really started after the Northridge earthquake, got involved with him and some of the recovery efforts. And you know, you really painted a great picture. I just, you know, I didn't always agree with him politically. We've gotten some great arguments. You know, he's very much a Republican. But he had this spirit about him where he really, he cared about the community. And he was always a supporter of mine, he was a friend. And you know, that's what mattered to him most, was talking about the issues and figuring out how we as a community could do better. And you said it right. I mean, he was about his family, and his family was his immediate family, but all of his employees at the Airtel, and he will be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Englander?
He had his own personal napkins made, just for himself. And when you would dine with him, it was a napkin that had a buttonhole in the corner. And he'd put the button from his shirt. He would take his tie off anytime he sat down, and he'd take the napkin and he would, and he would go right on the buttonhole, so he wouldn't get anything on him, because for him, it was all being about clean and classy. And those were his napkins, that no matter what, when you sat down, his staff, he would always bring over his staff when you sat down and have lunch or dinner with him at the Airtel. And he would introduce everybody on his staff. He'd bring the chef out, he would bring the busboys, the waiter, waitress, and tell you about their family, how long they'd been working there. And he was so proud of his entire staff. He would tell you about their families, and without fail, and he did it every single meal. And he's just such a proud man. And so, thank you.
Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, have a great weekend. This meeting is adjourned.